Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our auditorium setting for tonight. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milligan?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Landau?
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, please? And is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Our agenda stands approved. Thank you. Next item is approval of our minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the October 26th monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve that, those minutes?
So move.
We have motion and support. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? Any thing? All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The minutes stand approved. Thank you. Citizen participation. Verbal communications. I see Ms. Kissel coming forward on behalf of the WCC Education Association. Please.
Didn't trip down those stairs.
Very graceful. Well done.
Well, it's November 2021, and it's really exciting to see all of my new colleagues behind me. So, welcome, everyone. So, November 2021, and since last month, the WCCA has completed a series of letters of agreement defining our return to campus in winter 2022. As I noted in October, we are continuing our conversations around the health and safety, vaccinations, booster shots, and technological support needed. We've provided the administration with a working list of needs and assumptions around our safe return. In fact, just today, faculty and staff received a request to complete a survey to better understand the space and network issues as we return to campus. Of course, the worry, fear, anxiety is not only around making sure we remain healthy, but to protect those around us. We worry about the exponential stress of our network as we descend on the campus. For the last 18 months, we've been able to rely on our remote resources to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students in and out of the classroom. We do hope that the information gleaned from the most recent survey will provide the information needed to make the best and most responsible decisions for our entire college community. And while I recognize that my responsibility lies in serving the WCCA membership, the decisions and agreements made by the WCC impact the college as a whole. So, to that end, I want to remind the membership of the importance of completing the survey fully. Additionally, looking at tonight's agenda, I see that you will be voting on those who qualify for emeritus staff status. Seeing the list of 26 individuals totaling 679 years collectively reminds me that we have lost and continue to lose valuable institutional knowledge. And indeed, these times, they are a changing. So, open lines of communication within and among the campus stakeholders is so critical. But, like many of us, I'm looking forward to our Thanksgiving and the chance to spend time with family and friends. Of course, I'm thankful for my help and that of my family and friends and colleagues. So, from the WCC to all of you, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
EVP Hearns, I understand that we now turn the program over to you, please.
Good evening. I have the pleasure today to introduce some of our new faculty who've joined us this fall, and many of them are standing right behind me, so as I introduce them, I'd like for them to please stand. Erin Anderson from the English Department, Myron Covington from the Communication Department, Christina Herden from Psychology, Emily Duff, Geology and Environmental Science, Wayshu Bu from the Physics Department, Sean Martin in Manufacturing, Ashley Jones in Welding and Fabrication, and Ashley had an emergency, so she won't be standing up, but she did join us this fall as one of our new welding faculty. Michael Kidd from the Computer Information Technology Department, and Keith Pellerito from Surgical Technology. These faculty joined us in mid-August. We had a wonderful orientation with them. They started and hit the ground running in the fall. We've been meeting every other week in our new faculty orientation, and they're an exciting and diverse group of skills and experiences that they bring to the college, and we're really happy to have them. So, please welcome them to Washtenaw.
Thank you.
What a great contingent. I'm impressed with the size of it, and we're very pleased to have you all with us. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions, Kim. What is the new faculty orientation like? It's every other week, or every, what is it?
So, actually, the new faculty orientation is every other Friday morning, and we, in the previous years, we did it just over the first semester. So, right in 2019, I think we had changed it so that we do it every other week, and then we extend it to monthly during the second semester. And the new faculty rotate and meet people from all over campus. They come to them, do presentations, they do tours, which we're hoping to do next semester. They have projects that they work on, they learn about curriculum and assessment work, and they get to know each other, which is extremely important.
Could we have a list of their names and their departments at some point?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Our second person that I'm introducing today is our new dean, Dr. Sheri Lambert. She joined us on November 1st, and we're very excited to have her. She started her career at the age of 17 as a Certified Nursing Assistant in a long-term facility. She then worked for four years on a medical surge unit. She also served in the plant as a nurse in the steel mill for five years. She's worked at both Monroe County Community College as well as Henry Ford, and she comes to us directly from the University of Detroit Mercy. Sheri is a graduate of Mercy School of Nursing in Toledo, Ohio. She received a Bachelor of Science in Nursing at the University of Detroit Mercy, a Master of Science in Nursing from the Medical College of Ohio, University of Toledo, and a Doctor of Nursing Practice at the University of Detroit Mercy. We're very excited to have her on our team, and again, like our faculty, she's hit the ground running.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm very pleased, Jamie, stand up, to introduce Jamie Zekman, who's our new Deputy Chief in Public Safety. She has joined the Public Safety Department in the new Deputy Chief role. She replaces Matthew Lied, who accepted the Chief of Police position at EMU earlier this past summer. Ms. Zekman has a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Ferris State University and a Master's Degree in Public Administration from Saginaw Valley State University. She has over 20 years of law enforcement experience, including 17 years with Saginaw Valley State University. She's also served as an adjunct faculty member at Delta College, teaching criminal justice. Please join me in welcoming Jamie Zekman to the college.
Welcome, Jamie. EVP Hearns, do we have you back now to discuss the Michigan Society of Radiologic Technologists?
I am back again with William Nelson, our radiography faculty member and program director, which you all know because he's here usually every year, to introduce our students, who actually win awards every year, and he's going to describe better than I can what awards they met and won, and to introduce the two students who are here to join us today.
Thank you. And so, again, we come before the board, thank you, Dr. Flot, and the board members for allowing us to be here, putting us on your agenda. Our radiography students work very hard, and who I have here today are two second-year radiography students who were involved in the Michigan Society of Radiological Technologists competitions. This is something that goes on every year. Last year, obviously, we weren't able to attend, but this year we were, which was very exciting. So, I would like them to stand. I'm going to have you guys stand. So, David Chesser, wave to everybody. David Chesser, he was involved in the Student B Competition, which is a knowledge-based competition. This year, there was about 30 students involved with that. They were asked questions regarding Imaging Physics, Radiographic Positioning, Anatomy and Physiology, Pathology, and it's kind of like a Student B where they have to answer questions, and if they get it wrong, they go sit down, but they get it right, they continue. And David got first place in that competition. Very proud of him.
Bravo.
And standing next to him is Haley Craft. One of the other competitions is a scientific essay, and so the scientific essay is something that is written based on any area in diagnostic imaging, and Haley received first place in that competition.
Ah-ha. Bravo.
We're very proud of both of them. So, thank you for letting us be here.
As are we proud of both of you. Thank you very much.
Quick question.
We have a question. Trustee D'Varity?
Just a quick question. Where do all the contestants come from? What kind of institutions? What kind of other institutions do the contestants come from?
Oh, the other students?
Yes.
They come from other colleges from around the state. So, there are a variety of community college and some hospital-based programs. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. EVP Blakey, annual student and financial aid profile, please.
Good evening. We're back again to go over kind of our annual presentation of our annual screen profile, as well as our financial aid profile. And so, Lori Trapp, the Director of Financial Aid, will be presenting with me this evening. I think it's important to note, as we kind of go through and look at the last year, 2021 was the year of COVID. So, we have the three semesters that were most impacted by COVID. As noted, for some of our divisions, especially in Advanced Technologies, some of those divisions were more impacted than others by COVID. We had staff across campus that were able to pivot and successfully provide students with instruction and services remotely. So, we're very proud of the efforts that happened across campus. And our virtual classes were born during this year. So, the enrollment profiles, remember that all this data is reported to the state. Fall enrollment is based on the official federal count date of October 15th. And in both of the books that you receive, in your packets, you have the annual and the fall, and infographics are included for easy reference in those booklets. So, new for this year is that all the reports, the annual, the fall, the financial aid, were generated out of our new Argos reporting tool. You may remember several months ago that you approved the purchase of that tool, and it's been an amazing journey to get the reports out of Argos with many, many hours of staff time and with our LUCI partner to do that. What was labeled in the past as a division, our academic division, is now college. So, we'll have like the College of Health Sciences or the College of Math Engineering and Engineering and Science in Math. The federal and state reporting rules now require that all dual-enrolled high school students are reported as non-degree seeking. So, that will impact our degree-seeking numbers moving forward. We know, especially for our middle college partners like WTMC, that those students are actually degree-seeking. They have to get a degree, a certificate, or associate degree to meet their graduation requirements. But again, those are new state and federal requirements. Subjects that move departments and/or divisions are reflected in all the prior locations. So, in the past, we might have merged those all together, but now you actually, when you look at those kind of historical five years, you actually can see where some subjects might have moved departments or divisions, and it's reflected in those five years. The flexible education portion of the report has now been updated to include Nala Dia, which is again our asynchronous online, Virtual, which is our new synchronous online, and our Mixed Mode, which is partial online and partial face-to-face. So, again, for 2021, we had 18,612 students enrolled in credit classes. Again, that's the unduplicated headcount for Fall '20, Fall '21, and Summer '21. That was 23, almost 2,400 students less than the prior academic year. Our UA Summer Program accounted for most of this decline. Because of COVID, our Summer UA Program, which generally has between 1,800 and 2,000 students, was not able to run, and those are generally counted in the annual profile. We had a decrease of, our new students were 7,574, and that was a decrease of about 7% over the prior academic year. Annually, our minority student enrollment is 34.2%. That compares to a composition for the county at 27.7. We expect that that will get adjusted as the new census data comes out. We do have an increase from 31% over 1920. Our male students, again, this is accounted for by our UA Program not running, decreased by 2,439 to 8,146. So, they made up 44% of the students annually over the last year. Our female students made up 56% and had a count of 10,282. For 1516, our male ratio was 52% male and 48% female. Again, that decline in males was due to our not-running UA. So, if we look at the new students' educational level, so again, this is the educational level that students are coming to us. We had a 212 student decrease, or eight in college graduates, and we had a 2% increase in transfers from colleges and universities. So, students who have attended a college or university prior to coming to Washtenaw, we had a 2% increase in those individuals. 11% of our students are currently enrolled in high school, and 58% of our new students have prior college. So, either our 13% are college graduates, and the rest are transferring in credits. We look at the kind of the age descriptions of our students, you can see that we decreased in all age categories. Our students aged 17 and below decreased 7%. Our students aged 18 to 20 decreased 2%, so we had about 6,027 students in the 18 to 20 age category. Our 21 to 24 went down to 4,053, and our students that are 25 to 34 decreased by 6%. We look at our non-credit enrollments, that we had 7,764. Again, thinking that this is a COVID year, I think this was a very, very good thing that we were able to do. We had a decrease of 11% over the prior year. In our non-credit area, we were able to offer courses in 67 different subject areas. The five areas listed at the bottom of the sheet accounted for 65% of these non-credit We look at the students who graduated with either certificates or associate degrees over the last year. Our total awards were 3,166. Our certificates were down, 274, down to 1813. Those certificate loss was primarily due to our SENA certificates. That's our Certified Nursing Assistant Program. It went from 185 and dropped down to 3. Again, we could not access the clinicals, and so that program was not able to run during the past year. Our associate degrees was 1,353, and again, that's all degrees that were, associate degrees that were posted through the month of August. We continue to have a strength in our MTA, our Michigan Transfer Agreement Certificate. We had almost 1,100 students earn that certificate over the last year. We're getting increasing strength in our General Studies Degree. It went from 72 to 111. And our Cyber Security, we were able to issue, our associate degrees went from 7 to 21. Some of those graduates were from our new partnership with Livingston County, a new middle college program in cybersecurity for Livingston County. Our Journey First Industrial increased 100% from 12 to 24, and our Core Business Certificate increased 14% up to 134. And our Math and Science Associate, again, we continue to have good science graduates, increased 83%. So, again, the infographic sheet is in your, in both books. The two columns on the left talk about the 2021 annual facts. The column on the right, on both sides of the sheet, talk about Fall '21 facts. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Lori Trapp, our Director of Financial Aid, to go through the financial aid profile.
Okay. So, for 2021, the Financial Aid Office administered $28,336,028. That is a nine-and-a-half percent decrease since the 1920 year, and I'll point out some of that, where that decrease comes from in a couple of slides. The number of students for 2021 has decreased to 6,023. There were 6,442 students in 1920. 34.2% of WCC annual credit students received some type of financial aid. And then, down below, you can see how that's broken down by semester. It ranges from 29.8% in the summer semester, up to 41.5% in winter, and then 37.5% in Fall of '20. So, why have our numbers decreased in the Financial Aid Office? If we all think back to March of 2020, there had been students that had registered for the summer semester already when we left campus. In the summer of '20, we then gave 693 students who registered for summer prior to us going remote $40,157, and that was to the differential between the in-person and the online tuition, so we gave them a scholarship for that amount. Of those 693 students, 492 of them were counted as financial aid recipients in the 1920 year, but that was the only fund that they would, they received. So, that, they got counted in our numbers in 1920, and then they were gone in 2021. The number of students, let me back up a bullet, 5,950 students received aid in 1920 if we take out that 492 students who only received that small scholarship in the summer of '20. The number of students receiving financial aid increased slightly in 2021 if we make that correction. We go to 6,023 students from 5,950, or an increase of 73 students. The dollar amount also decreased, and the main reason that decreased is due to student loan borrowing. The amount of student loans has decreased by $2.3 million between 1920 and 2021. Many things, I think, have impacted that borrowing. The availability of our CARES grants, which we will talk about later on in the presentation, of course, Future for Frontliners and Michigan Reconnect students. They're not, it's a different mix of students. We don't see them borrowing at the same rate as our other students have. Student expenses were less during COVID. They stayed home more. They didn't have childcare and transportation expenses. Some of their technology expenses were helped through our CARES money, but then perhaps internet access was of a reduced rate or something like that. And then, of course, the availability of stimulus checks. So, of all of those financial aid funds, approximately $9.7 million in financial aid was used to pay tuition at the college this past year. Almost $700,000 was used to purchase books and supplies at the WCC bookstore. This is a decrease of $165,000 from 1920, which would speak to the good work that faculty are doing to find OER and reduce cost resources for students. Our financial aid comes from different sources. We get money from the federal government, the state, WCC, and external sources. And as we go through the presentation, keep in mind that the WCC Foundation is part of the external sources. The federal amount was $23.7 million. The state, we're going to talk about that. That's a big increase for us and continues to go up at $2 million from WCC, $727,001.18 million in external sources. Also, different types of financial aid. For grants and scholarships, which of course, the students don't have to pay back, grants were $14.435 million, scholarships $2.5 million, student loans $11,321,000, and work-study was at $42,000. So, this is our federal pie. This shows all the different funding sources for the federal dollars. $11,700,000 in the federal Pell Grant, and also an additional $11 million in student loans between the subsidized and unsubsidized student loan. Almost $32,000 in parent loan for undergraduate students. And then, we combine all of the other small grants together, the SEOG, the Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant, Fostering Futures, and the Perkins Grant, and then the $42,000 in work-study. And talking about work-study and SEOG, those two funds are pots of money that set amount, set dollar amounts that we are given through the campus-based programs for the federal student aid. And during the national emergency, we were allowed to move funding in between work-study and SEOG because we weren't able to employ students in the work-study program. So, the dollar amount between the two funds stayed approximately the same between 1920 and 2021. In work-study, we had eight students who worked in 1920 and received that $42,000. They worked in club sports, the Performing Arts Department orientation, and at the Parkridge Center. That allowed us to give more students a grant. We gave 591 students the SEOG grant at just over half a million dollars. The state of Michigan. So, that has increased by a million dollars. We have $2,53,203 in, from the state. The Tuition Incentive Plan, or TIP, continues to be the largest, although that will shift. We had TIP money last year for $950,000. The Futures for Frontliners Program was $832,000, and Michigan Reconnect $190,000. As a reminder, WCC provides scholarships to high school students through the President's and Procasini Scholarship. We give six full tuition and book scholarships to each public high school in Washtenaw County, and it's renewable for a second year, depending on the student's academic performance. For the Excellence Scholarship, we had 50, we give 50 scholarships worth $3,000 per year for graduates from any high school, from any county, any area, might be an international high school or homeschool students. In 2021, 449 students received $727,000 directly from WCC. 171 high school graduates received $468,000. $71,630 was given to students for books. This is a decrease of $114,930 since the $20, $30 since the 1920 year. Remember that 693 students that I talked about? We gave them $40,000 in the summer of '20, so that is part of that decrease. There are other funds that the college helps students with that don't, aren't administered directly by the Financial Aid Office, but we do give the Emeritus Scholarship to students. That totaled $382,545. The credit class amount of that was $127,000. Students who work in or have property in district receive $71,779, and then the Livingston County Scholarship and Partner High School Scholarships are listed there, and those were less due to COVID. External sources, $1.8 million. This is a decrease of 18.4% or $407,000 since 1920. The Foundation scholars, the Foundation gave $1,355,000 in scholarship dollars to students, and then external scholarships that come into the office from various organizations totaled $444,000. Of that amount, $192,000 was through the STEM grant, STEM scholarship. This is a chart of the WCC Foundation. $1.3 million was given to 1,237 students. This is a decrease of 20% over 1920. It is, however, an increase of 91% over the last five years. The Foundation helps students with tuition, books, childcare, and other educational expenses. Also from the Foundation is the Emergency Fund. As a reminder, students apply, apply confidently, confidentially on the WCC website. A committee of staff from the Foundation and other Student Services Office determine the eligibility. In 2021, 87 students received $24,000. Since its inception, 440 students have been helped with over $111,000. Since its inception, 440 students have been helped with over $111,000 since the winter of 2017. And it has been noted that students receiving those funds have an 84% retention rate. So it might be small dollar amounts, but those small dollar amounts make a very big difference in those students' lives. Food and gas card, help with utilities. I just talked to Shayna Barker in the foundation this week, and the utilities, it has been a big deal just recently with shut-offs for electrical, with DTE that she's been helping students with. Other technology support. And then also importantly is that students are referred to other campus resources and outside agencies. And like the student profile, there is an infographic in this financial aid profile with the, where the left column is the 2021 facts and the right column is, are the Fall 2021 facts. So I think it's important that we spend a little bit of time talking about the Future for Frontliner and Michigan Reconnect programs. So as you may know, the governor has an office called the Office of 60 by 30, and the goal is to increase the number of working age adults with a skill certificate or college degree to 60% by 2030. That office is administering two scholarship programs that are supporting the school, the Future for Frontliners and the Michigan Reconnect. There are three steps for both programs to be eligible. Students had to submit an application, or still can, for Michigan Reconnect to the state for the program. They have to apply and be admitted to WCC, and then they need to complete their FAFSA. Future for Frontliner was, is a scholarship program for Michigan, Michiganders who worked in essential industries during the state COVID shutdown in the spring of 2020. This scholarship provides tuition-free access to local community colleges to pursue an associate or a bachelor degree. The students cannot have those degrees already, obviously, and it pays the in-district tuition and fee amount. Future for Frontliner is the last dollar, is a last-dollar scholarship, and it will pay only after other tuition-only funds and the federal Pell Grant. So not all applicants who are eligible based on the state's guidelines will receive the scholarship if they're getting Pell or some other tuition-only fund. So in 2021, we had 699 students who received $832,000. The future, in the Future for Frontliner program. That began in the winter of 2021. So it was winter and summer. We've had two semesters for Future for Frontliners. There are an additional 325 students who we have to continue to monitor and who are reported as eligible to the state of Michigan, but they did not receive a reimbursement because they had other funds paying their tuition. This is important because the student could pick up that scholarship at a later date if their financial situation were to change. Future for Frontliner students had to begin their enrollment before the end of this calendar year, so there will not be any new F4F students. In the fall of '21, so this current semester, we have 779 students who are receiving $665,490 and an additional 303 students who are reported as eligible and no, as eligible, no reimbursement. For Michigan Reconnected is basically the same eligibility criteria, except taking out the frontline worker piece. And it's for Michiganders who are 25 and older, old and older, and who have not yet earned that degree. The other difference on this slide is that students can be in default on a federal student loan and receive Michigan Reconnect. Otherwise, it's exactly the same as Future for Frontliner. In 2021, we began in the summer of '21. So we had one semester for Michigan Reconnect. We had 214, 214 students who received $190,446. An additional 209 students were, again, reported as eligible, no reimbursement to the state. The number of students who are eligible for Michigan Reconnect will continue to grow. In the fall of 2021, this current semester, we have 538 students who will receive $480,000 and an additional 347,000. No, not thousand. We wish it was 347,000 students. 347 were also reported as eligible, no reimbursement. We have various supports in place for the F4F and Reconnect students. We have, in our recruitment area, a weekly Reconnect information session with one-on-one recruitment support to assist students in completing their enrollment checklist. I have a financial aid staff member who is reaching out to help students remain eligible for the funds because there's some interesting things that students need to do to continue to get that money. Because the funding only covers tuition, the college has been helping more students with books and through our book scholarship program. We have a dedicated success coach to help the F4F students and connect them with WCC resources. The state of Michigan also provides a Reconnect Navigator to help WCC students as they enter the program and come to the college and WCC staff meet monthly with the Navigator for updates. So WCC CARES Grant. So we have been providing CARES grants to students through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, or HERF, under those three separate acts that are there. You can see the totals there in the, for 1920, for the 2021 year, and then 2122. So far, we have given 14.6, almost 14.7 million dollars to students. I think we do anticipate that the winter of '22 will be our last semester giving out CARES grants to students. I have a team member who has continued to make calls to students as they have submitted their CARES application, applications, and she has made over 2,900 calls to students for personalized follow-up through, after reading what they had to write for their reason for needing help with CARES. We've referred many students to the Student Resource Center or other resources on campus. And then we can also work with those students to adjust their income on their FAFSA and potentially make them more eligible for federal aid. Okay. So I ask my staff when I come, before I come to see you guys and say, I'm going to be, you know, meeting with the board. And I ask them what they would like me to tell you. And I think I would like to say about my staff is they have an incredibly special set of skills. They have to know an awful lot about everything on campus. We help students with very sensitive information when we're talking about their finances. One of my staff wrote a little note and a student story that I would like to hopefully read to you. And this is from Kristin Hooper, who is the Financial Aid Coordinator in my office. And she writes, "This is a student that both Heather Waters and I were helping. She came to the counter with her aunt because she was unable to provide parent information on her FAFSA. As she began to feel comfortable with Heather, it was revealed that she had just moved to Michigan from Alaska because she was freeing an abusive home environment. We found out that before she was, before she left Alaska, she was showering in a lake and living in a car. Her aunt here in Michigan is her only family beyond her parents, and she was welcome, she would be welcomed with open arms if the student could get here. So the student drove for weeks without ever staying at a hotel. She lived in her car, and she got lost a few times. Eventually, she made it to her aunt's home and was, and is trying to make a new life for herself. She already has a job, and she wants to pursue her dream of going to college, which brought her here to WCC. She was crushed when she was at our, our counter, and she found out that her FAFSA was rejected. And it was rejected for lack of parent information, and she was crying tears of hopelessness. After lots of emails, because her phone was also turned off in the meantime, and almost giving up, the student was able to work with us so we could complete her FAFSA and appropriately marked her as a homeless and unaccompanied youth where we didn't require the parent information on the FAFSA. She now has federal aid to pay for her coursework, as well as the foundation scholarship for both fall and winter semesters. She is well on her way to positively altering her path in life. And I, which is Kristin, who wrote this, get so much joy, much joy, job satisfaction from playing a tiny role in helping her on her way." So likewise, I think this is, this is from another staff member, Mary in my office, who's rather new. She says, "I took this job not knowing what it would be like to work in financial aid, but thinking it would be cut and dry working with numbers. What we do deeply affects our students' ability to enrich their lives, and anything we can do to help is often so appreciated. Once, I felt like I could actually see the burden, see part of the burden being lifted from a student's shoulders as we talked through her issues over the phone. The most important thing I have already learned is how very personal financial aid is." And from Brittany, "I had a student who was deaf, and her preferred method of communication with our office was email. Though our email communicate, through our email communication, I made her aware of the Michigan Reconnect, helped her with her book costs through our book certificate and the CARES grant. She was so grateful." And finally, Heather added, "I had a student I had helped previously return to the counter with tears in her eyes. When I asked her what was wrong, she explained that she received the $2,000 CARES grant. The pandemic has been difficult financially, and that grant was going to help her family. She wanted to hug me. The impact that WCC has in helping families has no limits. I love being part of that. It is truly an honor." So from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure the bottom of all of yours, I would like to thank the staff in the Financial Aid Office. They are one of a kind, and they work very hard.
Thank you for that, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. So now we're going to switch gears and talk about Fall 2021. Again, as I noted before, our official count date was October 15th. We had 10,937 students enrolled for the fall semester. That's down 2% over the last fall. And our credits are a little under $90,000 at $89,832, and that also is down 2% over the last fall semester. It's not supposed to be there. Our new students are 2,795, which is down 339 over Fall 2020. And our continuing students is a flat over the last fall semester at a little under 7,000 students. We have continued to focus on completion and our, as Lori noted, the Futures for Frontliners and our Reconnect has allowed more of our continuing students to stay enrolled in school. For our full-time students, they decreased from 28% to 25%. So we have one quarter of our students enrolled full-time, which is 12 or more credits. Our average credit load of our degree-seeking students has remained flat at 8.7 credits for the semester. And our average credit load of non-degree-seeking students has decreased from 6.3 to 6 credits this semester. Our average age increased slightly. It's 26.6 years this fall semester, and that compares to 25.6 in fall of 2020. Our minority composition has increased slightly to 34%, and that compares to 33.8 for fall of '20. In Fall '21, our duly-enrolled high school students have remained level at a little over 1,100. Our top five feeder high schools for our new students is Ann Arbor Huron, Brighton, Ann Arbor Pioneer, Heartland, and Celine. As noted in the feeder calculation, it includes our duly-enrolled high school students as well as our students who have graduated no matter what year. We continue to increase in our dual enrollment partners. You can see the listing of schools, Dexter Middle School, excuse me, Dexter High School, Pinkney, Heartland, Ypsilanti Community Schools. Howell are all middle college partners with the college. The WTMC proportion, Washtenaw Technical Middle College proportion of our dual-enrolled high school students remained at 42%. Now let's look at our fall course modes. So when we look at our student count, we can, students can be in kind of three categories. We have students who are in face-to-face classes only. We have students that are in DL and virtual. Again, we talked about the virtual kind of development. So online would be our asynchronous online, and virtual would be synchronous online. And then on the far right are students who are taking a mixture. They have some face-to-face classes and some online and virtual. So 15% of our students are taking face-to-face only. And you can see the composition is 48% female and 52% male. Those students are, 31% of them are age 20 and below, and 62% of those students are in district. If we look at the students who are taking online only, it's 61% of our students this fall semester, and 61% of those students are female. Those students of 34% are age 20 and below, and 53% are in district residents of Washtenaw County. And again, the students who are taking a combination of in-person and face-to-face, it's 25% of our students, a little over 2,700. 53% of those students are female, and 49% are age 20 and below. And 61% of those students are in district. So some of the fall strategies that you've used, we've continued to do our virtual classes. That was a mode that was very popular with our students. And based on, based on what they want, we've scheduled more of those classes. We've continued to expand our DL courses and develop those. We have an accelerated business program this fall that we started offering in a cohort model that allows students to take accelerated classes and get their associate degree in 17 months. We have more accelerated options for some of our additional certificates, especially in our business area. We have continuation of our smart payers. We have assigned advisors. Instead of students just coming in and seeing any advisor, they're assigned based on their program. And we've been able to provide outreach via Target X using emails, texting, and phone calls. Our recruitment team also has done outreach, outreach to potential students who are applying for the Reconnect Scholarship. And then we, you know, reach out to them to kind of finish the process to enroll with us. I want to give a special shout-out to our Alucion team of Cami Davis, Nicolette Beckley, Pat Bracco, and Todd Krueger. Their efforts, along with the WCC staff, were spent with nearly 1,000 hours to produce the profiles via the Argos reporting tool. I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff for supporting the enrollment initiatives during the pandemic. In addition to the Alucion team, special thanks to Kathy Curry, Kim Hearn's, our, the IR team, Institutional Research Team of Julie Morrison, Roger Morad, Bill Everin, and then Laura Turner, Rich Resler, and Lily Novell for the production of the books that you have. Again, there was many, many hours spent going over all the data as we converted it from kind of running it in Access, but now being able to do it in Argos. So a lot of really good conversations, but it's going to put us really in a really great spot moving forward. And I'd also like to note that we've started winter registration already, and our winter semester will begin on January 10th. Do you have any questions?
This is a remarkable compilation of data. Thank you for that. It's clear that a lot of hours went into the preparation of this. And I have one question about feeder high schools. Feeder high schools, is that geographic? Or is it the school populations? Or how do, how do those schools make our feeder high school list?
We list all the schools, and those were, like, the top 10 feeders were listed there. So we have expanded our outreach to high schools. So we now have high school students that are enrolling from across the state rather than just locally. So I will say that, you know, we have, we have had, in the past, we've had our counselor breakfast, and we've generally have had kind of about 42 partners that are more local as our primary feeders. Last year, we started doing that event remotely, and we're going to continue to do it remotely. And now we're expanding our invites to all, kind of across all counties. Because we have high school partners that have reached out that do dual enrollment with us. And so we're able to expand our operations through the whole state to encourage them to do dual enrollment with us.
Very impressive. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think I read the other day, I'm trying to think where I read it at, that the state is saying that the credits, that the students that are in the, I can't think of the program that we.
What is it called?
The non-credit?
Well, they, the state is considering not, the classes and credits that the students for high, high school students that are here on campus, that is not going to be considered any longer. How is that going to affect students enrolling into our, our high school?
Are you talking about the, them being degree-seeking? Oh, that doesn't, that doesn't impact, that's just how we have to report them. So it does not impact them being able to dual enroll. It's just before, you know, when we kind of talk about the percentage of our students who are degree-seeking or not degree-seeking. Before, those dual-enrolled high school students, if they said that they were planning to get a certificate or degree with us, we would count them in that degree-seeking bucket. But now, and again, that started with the feds and the state basically said, no. But now, and again, that started with the feds and the state basically said, no, now you can't count them in your degree-seeking bucket. Again, those, it doesn't stop those students from getting a degree. All the, all the middle college students will still, at the time they're applying for graduation, they'll get their certificate and associate's degree that they've completed. It doesn't stop them from earning that degree. It just, it stops us from counting them as degree-seeking while they're enrolled with us.
So it doesn't affect them if they want, just say like they want to transfer from our school to Eastern?
Oh, not at all.
Credit-wise?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Because they're still getting the same classes and so those, the transcripts still look exactly the same. It's only how we are able to report them to the feds and the state.
Exactly. Thank you very much on that one.
You're welcome.
I just want to say back to Ms. Trapp is that I remember when I decided to go back to school because I lived out of town and moved back to Ann Arbor and I decided to come to Washtenaw. And I, now, it wasn't a decision I had no choice, I felt at that time because I was born and raised here in Ann Arbor as everybody know pretty much. And I was, I had just separated, had two young children, didn't have a job. The typical single parent scenario here. And I came and one of the things that it always stands out in my mind is how the, everyone from the financial aid, counseling, everybody helped me from the time I set foot on this campus. And I can imagine how a person, and I was considered an older student, who is, knows that they need to go and get some skills so they can support for their family, but yet has that fear. And when, because I was there and I had the fear. I had anxiety. So I, I just feel so comforting to hear this report of the students who are coming here despite their challenges and how we're helping, you know, trying to help them through these challenges. And that's, that's very commendable for all of, everyone that works in these, these areas because it's so important of the empathy and trying to reach out for them to help the student to survive, the student to feel comfortable and, and that someone cares about them. I said all that to say this. This is a time in the life of where everything's so uncertain. How are we, and I say we, to bring back the students, you know, of our declining in percentages of students coming back to our school? And I heard what you said of all the phone calls and all of whatever texts and the modes to reach these people. But is there, and it seems like you're reaching and grabbing out of something from nowhere to try to get something, to beat somewhere. And how can we reach these people? How can we continually to reach the folks that you know that they need to come to school? It could be at Washtenaw, not, hey, I'm the first one, but any school. Especially to take advantage with what is here. We, the, the, these, don't, I, I know I sound like I'm on a platform here, excuse me. But we are in a position unlike some other community colleges around the state, in our state, who are really struggling worseer than us. And so it, it, it just begs the question is what else can we do? How else can we grab a hold these folks by the collar and say, you got to come here because this is for you. We've got all the bells and the whistles. We've got this, we've got that. What else can we do? I don't have the answer. You guys are the professionals. You know the ins and outs of areas that we don't know as board members. But we've got to continue.
Dr. Belacca.
To do the best that we can do.
If I may, we meet on that weekly. We have a strategic enrollment team and we look at data on a regular basis. Look at where, you know, where the market, where the classes are that people want to take, where the jobs are. We look at different ways of teaching now, apprenticeships, for example. Many students today, it's a new, it's a new, it's been a new day. All the things that we've talked about in strategic planning, all these years, it's all here. It all happened. It's all here. People want to earn while they learn. They want credit for prior learning. They want shortened accelerated classes. They want 15-week classes. They want face-to-face. They want, they want it. They want it all. And they need transportation. They need so many things. And so all I can say is you're right. You're 100% right, but they're on it. And I know that our faculty, I have to give them a lot of credit here too, that of course, in changing their techniques of teaching is very challenging. I mean, when you're a teacher, you know, if you taught 15, something 15 weeks and now you're going to teach it in seven, well, it's a new way of teaching. And so there's so much that they do too. And the other thing is the advisors. Now that we have advisors that have, we have 18 advisors, correct? 18 advisors that now have caseloads. That means they have clients, like over 500 clients. So I, I hope that number goes up from 2% decline.
Yes.
But hopefully.
Thank you. I have trustee Hatcher and then trustee DeVarty.
I'm assuming that, that the bugs were eliminated from Argos? I mean, it's going to be easier next time?
There's no bugs.
Or whatever it was. The difficulty that you expressed frustration with and all the 1,100 hours of work that went into making.
No, it wasn't frustration. It was just, you know, again, when you've taken, when you have data that's been kind of all kind of hand-done with access reports and you're basically taking data out and making sure everybody's on the same page. That's why there was multiple people in those meetings to talk about the, how we're going to do definitions. But then it goes into the, to frozen files and then the reports run off the frozen files. And so it was, it was really good. Lots of long discussions. But, but now we can push a button and.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Now it's.
Push a button.
I like.
Can you do the boing again?
Is that a technical term?
I'm also always impressed with our audit of financial aid offices and so forth because it is so complicated and so government rule-based. And we always come out so well in those audits. So I just want to thank you especially for that hard work. I know it's complicated and difficult. And I also want to know what, what's our ratio percentage of the different modes of learning for winter 2022? I mean, what's the rate, I mean, a third DL and a third virtual and a third, what's the, how's it going?
Give me one answer.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
For winter semester, it's about the same as it is for fall, but what differs is by division. So we're at about 30% when we look at some of our divisions like ATP and our health divisions. So we're looking at a third, a third, a third, but not in those heavy occupational areas. So we got, you know, a little bit more DL and virtual in some of our general ed courses. But we've continued to add face-to-face classes and adjust that as the need has occurred from a student standpoint. We're looking at that every day.
So there are more, a few more face-to-face percentages in the winter?
Absolutely. And we're, we're just moving it around a lot as we see the students shift back and forth from different classes. I shared this morning that our alpha scholars, which is kind of a good measure of our kind of full-time degree-seeking students, we surveyed those students and asked them probably late in September, kind of how they wanted to take classes and what time of day they want to take them on campus. And so we use that input from that group of students to actually plan the face-to-face classes that we would add for the winter semester.
What the response was? The response was?
They didn't register for. They didn't register for the face-to-face classes. So it is, it's been kind of like chasing what's going on. I think the students, they want to come back to campus, but we are still seeing students really have a mix or take on a mix of some face-to-face, some DL. And the virtual classes have really just grown in popularity, especially because we had been seeing students not take night classes, but now we're seeing students taking night virtual classes. So it's just been a, a, a lot of work in trying to figure out, kind of chasing the students around and figuring out what their needs are.
The virtual are synchronous.
The virtual, the virtual classes are synchronous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Trustee DeVarty.
I was just going to add one more thing. And the nice thing about the virtual classes for online learners, it's a much greater student success number there. So it's almost like a sweet spot in between that we're finding that really works out for the students who need the flexibility of DL. But the synchronous actually gives them a little bit more focus and kind of plans out their work a lot better.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee DeVarty, please. I'm intrigued by one aspect of your report and I, the thing with the numbers of high school students from around the state, not just nearby. I'm interested in the numbers of those students, how that enrollment might be growing. I'm just curious, who pays the tuition? Is it the state with their student, per student allocations? Or do the school districts from those different localities pay the tuition? Do we have a strategy in place? Because I see a real opportunity based on the strength of our DL and virtual programs that we're ahead of a lot of people throughout the education industry, not just in the state of Michigan. I see a real opportunity if we have a strategy in place for growing that number of participating high school students from throughout the state. I'm actually curious, is it possible that we can not just get students from the state of Michigan, but take that virtual and DL programs to out-of-state, out-of-state as well? So I'm, I'm looking at the growth opportunity. I know our demographics, you know, we're seeing tuition decreases that I think are largely driven by two factors. The demographics of the community, the aging of our society and by the strength of the economy right now and COVID. But this is an opportunity that we can kind of counter those trends for decreasing enrollment and go after some new areas. And I'm really intrigued by that. Do we have that kind of a strategy in place and, you know?
Especially in the state, sometimes you can't really go out-of-state because school districts can't pay out-of-state schools for the tuition because there's a struggle in the school districts with their foundation allowance that is paying that tuition. But definitely in the state, again, we have, there's a lot more growth of middle colleges across the state. And they, you know, once they get kind of certified as a middle college, they can take their enrollments, kind of their classes anywhere. And because we've been able to keep our tuition low, it gives the students some options of, you know, taking some classes to complete their programs.
But do we have a strategy in place that we're really going after that?
Yes.
And do you see if, can you forecast continued growth? I, I'm curious, you just said that we have numbers. I'm just wondering if we're seeing a trend, a growing, a trend of growth in that area? And if you can forecast what the potential is?
So we're expanding our high school partners in terms of schools that are allowing dual enrollment. And so, and we're seeing those growth in areas that outside of just our local, our local areas. Is it, and I think it's got potential to grow more across the state as we do more outreach.
Is there a way to put some sort of numbers on that? Like what kind of impact it could have going forward as it grows?
We'd be happy to probably discuss that with you.
Or anybody else that would be interested.
You know, it's a marketing strategy.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
I just want to say I think the reports were very well done and very informative. And I always look forward to this. So are you next?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your reports. Thank you. Next we have monthly reports, personnel recommendations, which is tab B in your packet tonight. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Is there support? I have support. Any discussion? Trustee Hatcher.
Are we still under a hiring freeze?
Are we under a hiring freeze is the question.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I mean, we are really filling the needs as they're needed, but yeah.
And we were about a year ago, a year and a half ago, there was a sort of a big deal about that. And I just wondered.
Thank you.
If we were still there.
Well, we're, you know, we base our hiring on our need. Thank you.
I was very, very happy to see, what, eight or nine new faculty here? And the only question I have is.
Ruth, could you get closer to your microphone?
Too relaxed.
Please.
Am I correct in thinking that we have three counselors? Three professional counselors? Four and 18 advisors, 16 advisors?
18.
Are we going to replace the counselors that have left? I hope we are. I just would like to put that in.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Financial reports. Before we vote on the financial reports, VP Barnes, is there anything that you'd like to highlight for us, please?
Yeah, I'll highlight a couple of things in the general fund, changes in the general fund and also some changes in the capital fund. So first, if you look at the tuition fees.
We're at tab C in our agenda tonight.
And I'm looking at the revenue and it's in the general fund. So total tuition fees were at 19.8 million. So in terms of where we are versus budget, very similar to last month, we're slightly favorable, progressing very well. In other revenues, the property taxes, we've collected almost 80% already, which is on pace, if not slightly, slightly better than we should be at this point. You can see there we are about $500,000 favorable. In terms of state appropriations, as I mentioned last month, we should end the year at about $600,000 favorable. Right now we're at $300,000 favorable and that's because of the increased appropriation from the state. In terms of trade partnerships, almost $900,000 favorable. We've had some activity that was unbudgeted or larger in scope. But there's also some corresponding costs that I'll highlight below. But in total, total revenue is up about $2 million so far, some of which is timing. In terms of expenditures, you can see at the bottom there that we're $550,000 favorable to where we should be in terms of the budget. We've spent 32.4% of the budget and after four months, we should be about 33%. So you can, you can see that we're basically on pace to deliver on the budget. Are there any questions? If not, I'll go onto the capital fund.
Please proceed.
Just wanted to highlight a couple of things, just pointing out your approvals from last month. At the top, under the United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, you'll see the $2.3 million that they're contributing toward our Great Lakes project. Wanted to highlight that. The MLB renovations now have the additional $3.5 million for the, for the technology investment. And the Great Lakes building, SRB and maintenance garage also, you'll see the $5.8 million that you approved last month or it was three and a half net of a $2.3. Just wanted to highlight that for you. Are there any questions on either of these?
Well, if you'll stay with us for a minute, let me get a motion on the table and then we'll see if there's discussion.
Okay.
The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for October 2021 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept this report.
And support from trustee Hatcher. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Facilities Development Report. EVP Johnson, you're always pretty good at this. Tell us how it looks, please.
Thank you. Really bring the board two big projects, both the M L and the Great Lakes Building Edition. The M L project, please report that we've mobilized the crews. They have started the demolition work. We're in week two of demolition. They've removed all of the ceilings out the need to be. They've demolished, taken out all the flooring. They started to remove and demolish, remove all the old restroom materials. And that's a critical phase to get that done as soon as possible. Because actually, a little later this week, both the electrical and the HVAC contractors now will be able to see up kind of behind the curtain, if you will, and see if the state of the systems are exactly as we thought they were going to be in so that they can do their assessment. And that's going very, very nicely. The, the, the building's in lockdown mode. There's very strict safety precautions. Anybody that enters the building needs to go through detailed training prior to going, to going in. And then there's very strict protocols when you enter the building, given the nature of the work. On the outside, they've actually started with the demolition of the skylight system. You might recall on both the east and the west entrances that the canopies extended out and the skylights were part of that. Those same skylight system extend through the building, the interior of the building. So they're using the outside, they're kind of practicing to take out their panels. They're practicing taking out a panel and then replacing it with a temporary panel. Because when they get inside, they need to be able to turn that around within an hour or two so that we don't expose, expose the interior of the building to the elements. So they're in that, they're in that learning phase on the outside. And then they're going to extend that learning to the inside. Also, please report that our HVAC systems and electrical systems, that all that equipment is, is, is on, is on time in terms of its ordering. None of our major equipment is going through the ports that are now being held, held up by the container ships. We have one shipment that's coming in from Mexico, but that's about as far. And all are, are on time. So project's going well. We're very impressed with the team, both the general contractor, Stenco, and the subs. We meet weekly. We walk the site daily. I personally walk the site each week in de, in detail. And there's always little things that, that you pick up. The crew's doing a great job with that. On the Great Lakes project, we have started the pre-planning. The board had approved the awarding of the Great Lakes Building Extension to Stenco. And we are starting to meet on that weekly. We're actually going to break ground on that project on December 6th is, is when we break ground on that. The steel has been ordered. The two long lead items are steel and the freight elevator. And the steel is on order and the freight elevator, we've met with the freight elevator company. And we don't expect any issues with that as well. Other than that, the detailed projects are here before the board. And all are, are going as planned.
Any questions of EVP Johnson while we have him? Trustee Hatcher.
Is there a difference between pre-planning and planning?
Trustee Hatcher, that's a great, a great question. So prior to mobilizing the crews is the pre-planning phase.
Okay.
And then the planning phase is once the crews are here and the plan, and, and the work plan for the project, once work commences, what we call the planning phase.
Okay.
So just nomenclature.
That's a good question.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Remarks of members of the Board of Trustees. Are there any trustees who wish to share some thinking tonight?
Well, I have just one remark. I had the honor of attending the memorial service for former trustee Procasini.
Here, here.
A week ago, Sunday. And it was a wonderful event. And Rose spoke very eloquently. And it was, he was quite a man, quite a contributor to the college, quite a part of our history. And it was an honor being able to memorialize him.
My sister was in law school and was a tenant of Tony Procasini. So I've known him for some time. And I thought I had Tony Procasini stories to tell. But I rest my case that there were things that we heard that day from others in the community that knew him were very touching.
It was really quite remarkable, yeah.
I'd just add that I saw him not even once a year, maybe once every two years or at dinners or something. And he always remembered my name. I just, it was just remarkable. I mean, I can't remember my name most of the time. He always remembered my name. It was remarkable.
And Dr. Blanca spoke very warmly of him at that presentation. But do you have remarks that you wish to make, Dr. Blanca?
I have one more thing. I just wanted to bring to our attention, not that I'm suggesting anything, but that the Ann Arbor District is giving a one-staff payment to retain staff, a 2% bonus to the staff, to retain the staff and thank them for their work during COVID. Just thought I'd pass that on.
Thank you. Dr. Blanca?
Is this it?
These are president's remarks, if you wish.
These are president's remarks? Okay, thank you. Well, actually trustee Landau did an outstanding job also speaking at trustee Procasini's memorial. It was very touching and beautiful. But Diana, trustee Diana McKnight-Morton, did you, was featured November 14th. Thank you. And she forgot to tell us, as part of the Ann Arbor District Library's Living Legends Oral History about, it's the African-American Cultural and Historical Museum of Washtenaw County. And she had a Zoom presentation last Sunday and did an outstanding job. So thank you, Diana. Thank you. This, and this is Michigan Apprenticeship Week. It was nice to find out today that it was. That's how it works in our business, you know? But anyway, or yesterday, rather. This is Michigan Apprenticeship Week. And, you know, we really believe in it because of how students can earn while they learn. And just wanted you to know, it's a good time for an update, that W C C has more than 3,200 trade apprenticeships enrolled in online credit classes representing the U A, the sprinkler fitters, along with 45 active participants, apprentices in manufacturing and the I T fields. And we're hosting a, an in-person and virtual apprenticeship information center sessions this Thursday, November 18th. And we are going to offer, I'm looking at Associate Vice President Brandon Tucker, since he's leading this initiative in terms of the college. We are also host, offering apprenticeships in advanced manufacturing, healthcare, information technology, cybersecurity, and general interest areas. You know, you can almost have an apprenticeship in almost anything. Isn't that great, like in the olden days? And Veterans Day celebration was very successful. And it began with a 7:00 AM sunrise, flag-raising ceremony in front of the Student Center. But this is very touching. Captain Osborne, Todd Osborne, I'll make sure I get his name correctly. He is the son of our own Carol Osborne that works.
Can I hold that for you?
Yes, would you please, so they could see it? He flew this flag over Iraq and Syria in support of Operation Inherit Resolve. It logged, sad actually, 55.2 combat hours on December 21st, 2020, onboard a Chinook helicopter by members of the Michigan Ohio Army National Guard. That's beautiful. We'll have that in our Veterans Center, Wattum's Veterans Center. And also, look, these people, they work very, very hard. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Warren is leaving us. I'm going to say this a little soon, Warren. He's moving. Yes.
Tell him where.
I just.
Where is he going?
Hawaii.
Thank you.
What can I tell you? Thank you. And I'd like to thank not only our employees, our faculty, all of our staff and the board. Wish everyone happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Dr. Blanca. Moving into old business in our agenda, tab E, 2021 Emeritus Staff Status Recipients. And there are 26 people here on this roster that are coming before us tonight. The senior most that I see here is 46 years of service. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees grant the retirees Emeritus Staff Status as stated in Board Policy 5045, Policy on Emeritus Staff as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So move. Court.
And I have support. Is there any discussion? Trustee Hatcher.
Will these emeritus, which I assume we will approve, be subject to the new Emeritus language? And will they get information about that as they get their status?
May I?
Please.
I sort of go ahead, but.
Yep, trustee Hatcher, if it's approved by the board tonight, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes. One day, my name is going to be on this Emeritus sheet. And you'll be saying McKnight-Morton.
And you'll undoubtedly appear in bold face when that time comes.
Could I make a suggestion to just a?
Yes, Ruth.
Could we have a list of the employee, their department and year of service?
Yes.
Next year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving into new business, four discussion. Recommendation for discontinuation of programs. EVP Hearn's? Could you describe that for us, please? Tab F in our agenda tonight.
So on tab F, you will, you'll, you'll see a list of programs. It's a combination of both certificates and associate degrees that made up our culinary department. You'll also note in the profiles this year that there were more students who completed their associate degrees and certificates more than normal because we made sure that all those students who were in the program over the last year completed the courses that they needed to complete those programs and/or we worked with them to, to get into another program. And so we present today the programs that make up that department that need to be discontinued.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for clarifying because I was getting, I was saying, hadn't we talked about this before? But we're getting them to move through the program so we could get to this point of discontinuing it.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
I was just going to say, I'd like to move that, take from discussion to a vote, if that's a possibility.
Trustee DeVarty? Is there any reason we need to vote on this tonight? Or, I mean, as, I've sometimes with the facilities for building projects, I can see a need, but is.
There is, there is no rush, no.
No rush.
I'd say let's just go like we normally do and vote next year, month. If there's, unless there's a real need for it to be, go through this month. I don't see a sense of urgency. Yeah.
I understand, but from my point of view, I'm looking at, we've discussed this before. This is not the first time this has been discussed. So why bring it back to beat the chicken some more? Excuse me for my.
In deferring to the people that administer the program, they say there's no sense of urgency. So let's simply bring it up for action next time.
She's in charge. I just don't see any, I don't see a reason why we have to wait. That's all I'm saying.
I'd just like to thank the, the two Emeritus faculty who were part of this program, who were listed on the pages before.
The next item is proposed changes to.
I'm not done with that. What are we going to do? I haven't heard anybody else talk about this myself. And trustee DeVarty?
Well, I suggested we defer to the people who run the program, Diana.
Well, I'd be sent.
Well, I need, we need a motion and a second if that's to go forward. I. I, I just would object to doing this out of the ordinary unless there's a real need to do it. And there's a reason that we put things on for discussion and then move the following meeting. And historically, we've always done that. And unless there's some urge, something urgent, like escalating prices on a construction project, if we don't move immediately, I don't see why we can't just vote on this next month.
I mean, they're not going to be kicked out the program because the program is, is winding down. I mean, they're already there.
People know that. Let's just.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, I don't see the, maybe you don't see my rationale and I don't see your rationale. So, because if this is a, and it shouldn't be debated this long, but I'm looking at, as I said, if voted upon, a roll call vote will be taken. That's all I'm looking at here. I think we discussed this before. Why are we going to bring it back a third time?
Could you make a motion to that effect and see where it goes?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the discontinuation of the, the Culinary Arts Department, specially, specifically the Baking and Pastry Arts Program.
Point of order. I think, wouldn't we need a vote to move this to an action item? So it's a two-vote thing, one vote to move it to an action item. And the second vote on the.
Okay.
That's what she, I thought that's what she was saying.
That's what I was saying, but.
And, and I'm not sure when the appropriate time to discuss the main motion is, probably after we've moved it to an action item. Yes. So we need a motion to convert it to an action item?
Actually, she already did.
I did.
And she seconded it.
I didn't second it.
So now we can just take a vote.
I did not second it.
You didn't second it?
Yeah, I thought you did.
No, I was suggesting it to her.
Oh, okay.
I second, I second, so come on. I second.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion to make this an active agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. No. Need a show of hands, I think. Well, Vanessa, call the roll, please.
Chair Milliken?
No.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, no.
Secretary Hatcher?
No.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
So the ayes have it. Moving forward, now it's on the agenda. And. I'll speak to the motion. Please. I hate to see this go, but there are other colleges that have culinary art programs that are very accomplished. This is an expensive program to carry out. I feel like it has a long history here at Washtenaw Community College. And I want to recognize that history. I'm, every one of these programs, it's in, in the written communication supporting this. It, I'm, I'm happy that students have moved to completing the program or they've been transferred to other programs, and that's across the board. I will vote for this. I think it's a moot point whether we voted tonight or next month. I just wanted to do it in terms of the usual process, but I will be voting in favor of this. Any other comments? Trustee Hatcher?
I would just, as, as the old lady on the board, I'd just like to remember Don Garrett, who started the program a long time ago, Vietnam vet, who I think it was his energy that kept it going as long as it,[1789.82] that kept it going as long as it, even after he died. So just wanted to mention his name, Don Garrett.
And I remember many Mardi Gras's where all of the staff came forward, and we had quite a celebration of the skills that they acquired under our tutelage.
I just want to say something real quick. In agreement with what David said, we've had some really good students that come out of the program with the recognition from when they've gone up to the state capitol to do guest catering there, received a lot of accolades and recognition from that. It is unfortunate that this particular program has to be discontinued, because it is an important skill, but in light of the direction that the school is going, I understand, business is business. But I hope that somewhere down in the future, I don't know how far in advance, maybe opportunities for a program like this or something similar could be reintroduced. I mean, we don't know what will happen down the road, but I would like to see something of this type to come back, to allow the students to, who wants to get into catering of some sort, maybe have a restaurant of their own, and they can come in and do some workshop courses. I don't know. We can figure it out, but, you know, there's always a place and time for something like this, and I hate to see it go, but I will vote to, in support of the discontinuation of the program, but I'd just like to see, maybe sometime in the future, we can bring it back.
I would like to say that without a doubt, this program was very instrumental to a lot of people in all walks of life. And having been in a business, run a business, I understand the importance of having certain skill levels, and this has done that. But I think that because of the changing of the tide in occupations, in what is out here now, everything is different. And I know there was, I remember having to see another program disappear from here in the past, and it's hurtful, because we've had these programs. However, I think at this point in time, in our ability to move forward, we have to sometimes give up certain things, especially if the interest is not in the program. So definitely, I support that this program be discontinued, and I think that, as trustee Davis mentioned, hopefully that in the future, some type of a modified type of program could be offered in the future.
Thank you. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the discontinuation of programs for the fall 2022 as listed in tab F in our agenda. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair, Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Lando?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes. Thank you all for supporting this.
Tab G on our agenda, proposed changes to Policy 5045, Policy on Emeritus Staff. General Counsel Barcoff?
Thank you, Chair. I can speak for this. Before you, our two proposed policy revisions. The first to Policy 5045, Policy of Emeritus Staff. The second to Policy 1070, Trust Emeritus Policy. Neither policy has been updated since 1997, as you'll see on the policy itself. There's been some confusion around the use of Emeritus email accounts. The thought is that by making these revisions, we'll bring clarity to that issue, so that those who are assigned Emeritus accounts will understand better, you know, how they're designed to be used. We also wanted to update the policies so that they're consistent with college operations. And also, instead of naming, you know, the publications that the Emeritus recipients, you know, will get access to, we decided to use more, you know, descriptive terms, so when those change in the future, the policy will still apply properly. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to know, how soon will this be implemented?
Well, right now, this is up for discussion. Typical cadence for policy revision would be two readings and a vote, so.
Dr. Blanca?
I'd like to thank trustee Hatcher for bringing this to our attention, because it really is the result of our retreat that we had on technology, and realizing that we had to tighten up this language just for cybersecurity reasons. So thank you, trustee Hatcher.
Trustee Hatcher, I saw your hand.
I guess I understand the internet stuff and the change that's appropriate there, but I don't, why did we scratch out invitation to college activities and special events? Where's the new language for that?
Yeah, I think the thought there was that the current internal newsletters, and even our external newsletters, they list the events that essentially becomes the invitation, that there wouldn't be a direct invitation to the people, but if they get the publications, they'll know when things are coming up and that they can attend.
Okay.
Dr. Blanca?
You know, we really would love, of course, everyone to attend, but when it says all events, we're going to miss it, and I don't want to be in violation of any board policy. Okay? We're going to miss something somewhere, and so we're trying to not do that.
Clearly, a group of people have discussed this and tested it out and moved forward on it and so forth. Okay, thank you.
It feels like it had good supervision, yes.
Again, I have a question.
Yes, Dave.
Is there any urgency for this? If we just do it next time, or?
I mean, as soon as we approve it, it's going to come to a fact. I don't know if there's any particular urgency to get it done tonight.
You said there's two readings and then-
Typically, it's two readings and a vote.
It's voted at the second reading, usually.
Oh, okay. And this, right now, is considered a first reading?
First reading.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to contact all the Emeritus out there with the change, or no? Never mind.
How many are left?
The next item on our agenda is adjournment of this session. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
And support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.